As a matter of record, we did have an executive session this evening. That executive session was held tonight from 6:00 to 6:55. And that session was regarding personnel and safety matters as well as discussions for personal items relating to athletics, consultation with our solicitor, and COVID health and With that, can we have a roll call, please? Okay, next order of business tonight is meeting minutes from November 9th. The board will take action and approve the meeting minutes from the November 9th, 2021, board meeting as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I have nothing to report on the Columbia Montour front right now. Dr. Gatachu is caught up with his work commitment, so he's not here. I don't know if anybody else has anything to share on the CSIU.
We've had no meetings since our last meeting.
Building and grounds, again, Mr. Reichert, anything tonight?
That committee meeting was canceled, so I have nothing to report either.
Okay. Athletic committee, Mr. Gordon.
Yes, winter sports practices began last Friday on the 19th. Also on that Friday night, our football team won their second in a row district championship under Coach Mike Brennan in his second year. So Mr. Brennan is two-for-two for district championships, which is pretty good. We don't have to pay him $10 million, $5 million. We pay him according to the coaches' matrix, which is pretty good bargain. So that means we advance on to the state tournament. We are now in the state quarterfinals. Tickets are through the PIAA. You go to PIAA.org, under the Fall Sports tab, select Football, and then purchase championship tickets. I believe they are $8.47 with the processing fee. We play, the football team plays Friday night at 6:00 PM at Lee Hayton High School against Newman-Goretty. Also in Friday night's game, Carson Persing, a junior, went over 3,000 career yards. He is the third player ever in District 4 history to reach 3,000 yards. He is now second in District 4 history in touchdowns with 36, and he also had back-to-back 1,000-yard seasons. If we win Friday night, we will play either the winner of Y Missing and Scranton Prep at a neutral site to be determined by the PIAA. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Policy committee, we, Dr. Gatachu's not here, but we, yeah, the committee meeting was canceled. Okay, thank you. Next order of business tonight is superintendent's reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. Boyle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have to want to advance? Our enrollment has held fairly steady. There have been a few, a couple fewer students in the district, district-wide as well as in the district. Pre-K counts head start have increased by a couple of students, so things are going fairly well. The same with cyber schools. We are keeping, you know, consistent with our numbers. So, you know, enrollment is still stable. Head Start wanted to talk about literacy at Head Start. We're talking about some of the academics that they're learning. Two of the items that they're especially proud of is that they're promoting reading aloud, and the teachers will read aloud to the students, which promotes healthy brain development, early literacy skills, and builds language and listening skills. Additionally, the students are now learning about authors, illustrators, front cover, back cover, spine, title page, and of course, we're promoting the love of reading with these little ones. At the primary school, again, we're looking at some reading things with Wiggle to the Top and phonics, and I'll get back to that in a second. We also have fractions in STEM, which encompasses math and science activities. So they're getting a very well-rounded education at the primary school with the hands-on activities. You know, you see the young lady cutting her pizza that she created out of Play-Doh into, actually, that's a half, but eventually it gets to an eighth as they work through it. I want to tell you about Wiggle to the Top. That is an incentive program that our reading specialists are promoting across the building. Students are encouraged to read each day, and they get a worm that they are to fill in the blanks for how many minutes they read. Kindergarten is encouraged to read 10 minutes a night, first grade 15 minutes a night, and second grade 20 minutes a night. Now, of course, they can read more, all right? And we encourage as much reading as they want. They log their minutes, and then the class can get a very special activity or reward depending on the number of minutes they've read. Like kindergarten, if they read up to 2,000 minutes and, you know, they accumulate it all together, then they get a surprise, you know, activity or a reward of some nature for having that many minutes. So it goes class by class. It doesn't have to be all the second graders or all the first graders. It is individual classes by teacher that end up earning their rewards. Liberty Valley today was a big day. They had Colonial Day in fifth grade where the teachers dressed up for the, as colonial individuals, and they did a lot of activities regarding colonial times. And then they too are encouraging reading. So across the district, we're very heavy on reading this year. It's the battle of the books. And in fourth grade, we had several students who won that battle. I think I have their names. I'm hoping I do. Fourth grade students who won were Tessa Tomko, Olivia Rodarmo, Carter Walter, Annabelle Barcalotto, might have ruined that one, sorry dear, Olivia Kipple, Claire Reader, and Helen Cotner. In fifth grade, we have Kylie Michaels, Izzy Need, Ava Benfer, Avery Canaski, Addison Brochus, and Alexandre Carmax were our winners for that. And they're, we want to congratulate them in their battle of the books. At the pri, or at the middle school, they wanted to say Happy Veterans Day. They treated that with a great deal of respect and encouragement to the students to understand exactly what that meant. We had student council, and Scout Troops 4077, 622, and 39 helped celebrate this event by raising new flags on the flagpole, giving speeches to honor the veterans, listening to our guests. We had veterans who were guests that spoke at this ceremony as well and talked about their stories and time in the service. We had musical accompaniment by Mr. Brennan and flag assistance by Ms. Hoover. And then Sam Sumatos, the student counselor advisor, put all this together. So we are grateful for those lessons that the student learned on that special day. Also, just so you know, be careful when you go into the gym at the middle school. It's archery season. And at the high school, again, the football, our district champions, and they're working through the process, as Mr. Gordon said. We did the wake-up and learn survey. That information went home to parents, and then that data will be reviewed in December. And then if there's anything that comes to light that we're concerned about for individual students, the parents will be notified. The band concert is on the 16th of December at 7:00, and the choir conference concert is on the 22nd as well. And I wanted to also highlight that our support staff union has created an initiative called Christmas for the seniors. And they're promoting, providing items for seniors in the various nursing homes, such things as large, large print crossword puzzles or word searches, little packs of candies, those kinds of things that would be enjoyed by the residents. And just a reminder, our holiday break is the 24th is a professional development, so no students through the 29th, which is Monday. And then at Christmas, we have a half-day on the 22nd of December, and we are closed the 23rd through the 30th, which takes us into a weekend, and we come back on January 3rd. And then our COVID update, we're still fairly consistent with our numbers as far as people who are positive. They're here and there. We've had a few staff members that have had to stay home with illness, but there are a lot of them not very ill. They're working from home, as far as teachers working from their go-go meet so that students continue to get proper instruction. But around the community, the numbers, if you can see in that white boxes, the numbers have been rising. Where we started last time, we left off at 6:00 and 7:00, and it has, you know, increased to now we're 11:00, 12:00 a day. Not huge numbers, but it does show that the COVID is still moving through the community, and I think we still have to be very cautious. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Okay.
I want to thank the outgoing board members. Your commitment, we have Christina Fish here, we have Caston Kirsh, and the other two are Bonnie Edmeads on the phone and Christine Gordon. I want to thank you very much for your time, for your energy. You've been very valuable, and I just may call you later anyway. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys, okay. Thank you, Dr. Boyle. Next order of business tonight is our first of the two public comment periods. The first one is for agenda items only, so if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment, the first one would be specifically to agenda items only. So therefore, if anybody would like to step forward and...
Mike.
Yep. Ask that you share your name and your address, and we ask that you limit your public comment to three minutes per our policy.
You need to press the button. Turn it on. You're welcome.
Hold it a little bit.
Is it on underneath, Christine?
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Thomas. The post office says I live at 309 Avenue D in Danville, Pennsylvania.
I want to thank the outgoing board members, your commitment. We have Christina Fish here, we have Caston Kirsh, and the other two are Bonnie Edmides on the phone and Christine Gordon. I want to thank you very much for your time, for your energy. You've been very valuable, and I just may call you later anyway. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys, okay. Thank you, Dr. Boyle. Next order of business tonight is our first of the two public comment periods. The first one is for agenda items only. So, if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment, the first one would be specifically to agenda items only. So, therefore, if anybody would like to step forward and...
Mike.
Yep. Ask that you share your name and your address, and we ask that you limit your public comment to three minutes per our policy.
You need to press the button. Turn it on. You're welcome.
Hold it a little bit.
Is it on underneath, Christine?
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Thomas. The post office says I live at 309 Avenue D in Danville, Pennsylvania. I know myself to live in Riverside on Avenue D, but that's another story. One of the many things that I value about living in the Danville area school district is the swimming and diving team at the high school and the close relationship and cooperation that exists between the high school team and the program at the Danville area community center. I have had two children take part in the swimming program, the swimming team here at Danville High School and at the community center. One is a senior in her final year of swimming, and her older sister, who graduated in 2009, received this athletic scholarship to swim in college. In fact, there have been quite a few Danville swimmers who have received athletic scholarships to swim in college over the years. I don't have the numbers, but I've been a parent involved in swimming in this area for the better part of two decades, and I suspect that Danville swimmers have garnered more athletic scholarships than any other sport offered in this district, including football. But all of this is a preamble to my real point this evening. I firmly believe that one of the main reasons that both programs, the DAC program and the high school swimming program, have been such a success because, is because of the many years of commitment from Coach Danielle Sticklin. Simply put, she's the best swim coach there is in District Four and perhaps in a wider area. I don't say this because of her success at winning district titles. She too has won a couple in a row, I think, maybe three, I've lost track, helping produce scholarship athletes. Although she's certainly done both of those things, I say it because she doesn't play favorites or pay attention only to the superstars on the team. She challenges each team member to do their best in the most positive way possible. As a school board, you should feel very good about Danielle Sticklin as your swim coach, as your head coach. Likewise, you should feel very good about Casey Hackett as diving coach. First of all, she has the trust and respect of Coach Sticklin. That speaks volumes to me. Like Coach Sticklin, Coach Hackett seems to encourage and truly develop all those who take part in diving in a very positive way. Under Coach Hackett, over the past couple of years, participation and interest in diving seems to me to be on the increase, and she's been able to send Danville divers to districts and states. I'm wrapping up. One more sentence or two if I'm on, if I'm over time. In short, I believe that coaches Sticklin and Hackett are the superstars of coaching in District Four for swimming and diving. Good swimming and diving coaches, hell, good coaches in any sport, don't grow on trees. My recommendation is to hold on to this pair as long as you can. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for that.
I have a copy of remarks if you need them for the record.
Thank you.
That would have been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here tonight that'd like to make a public comment? He just, he turned it off.
Oh, he did turn it off.
Yeah, press the button.
Till it turns green.
Just hold it down for a count of two or three. There you go.
I'm not a public speaker, but my son has asked me to come here today, so I'm...
Did you state your name?
My name is Amber Leota. We live at 140 Mogga Road in Danville. My son is on swim and dive team, and he would like me to say a few words for him about Casey Hackett. My son has dealt with severe depression and suicidal ideation for the past three years. Athletics have been a major part of his recovery. And being an all-around athlete has always been his passion. Last year, he found diving, and I remember the light in his eyes when he came home was something we hadn't seen in a while. It was his new adventure, and it kept him going. The coach, Casey, had a lot to do with this. She's knowledgeable, she's extremely supportive, she's enthusiastic, and she has been a very positive influence in his life. He's been looking forward to diving all summer, and he was distraught to hear that Coach Casey may be dismissed or that the diving team could be gone altogether. Danville has such a diverse selection of sports that many other schools don't have, diving being one of them. And I think it would be a shame for our district to lose such a unique sport with such a great coach. I urge the board to think of our children. And please approve Casey Hackett for diving.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a public comment?
Hi there. My name's Megan Oldfield, 188 West Mohning Street. I don't have prepared comments, so I'm going to kind of go off the cuff. I too am here to support the Casey Hackett as diving coach. Like Amber, I too have a daughter who has used the diving program, not just as a sport, as a resume booster, but as a mental health, she calls it a coping mechanism for her. So, I want to ask two questions, and you don't have to answer, but think about it. Number one, close your eyes and think of a coach that has made an impact on your life. I bet the majority of people in this room, somebody has come to mind. That person is Casey for my daughter, Lila. Number two, I want you all to think about what would motivate a 15, 16, 17-year-old girl to get in a very snug-fitting swimsuit in a very quiet natorium with all eyes on her and for her to throw herself, basically, into the air off the diving board. Casey Hackett is one of those reasons that my daughter does that. She is not somebody who wants a spotlight. She's not somebody who likes attention. That's why she's not here tonight. I came in her place. That's huge. She loves to dive. The thought of her not having a season, which I think starts today, yesterday, is devastating to her. These have been really hard months for our kids. I'm not saying anything you don't know. All of our kids have struggled mightily, and all of our kids hopefully have at least one thing, just one, one thing, that gets them to the next day, to that next whatever it is. Diving is what motivates my daughter. It has literally been one of the things, of the very few things, that has kept her alive. I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. I hate small-town politics and school board meeting drama. I'm just asking you to please consider these kids and what they are going through internally right now. So, regardless of the reasons behind her, Casey's whatever reinstatement or ongoing job, just think of the kids. Think of Lila, please. Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a public comment period, a public comment? Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, next order of business tonight is item 5.1. We have our friends from the Central Susquehanna Mountain Bike Team. So, I turn the floor over to you.
Yep.
Can we do this one?
Yes. Oh, this is way better. I want to be like a rock star, so I said I'm going to use this one.
You can, you can take it out of the holder.
No, that's too much like a rock star.
Okay.
Take it off and...
I'm Dave Dakota. I am one of the co-captain coaches. Matt McElroy is the other one. And I'm here tonight because we do this every year. We make a little address and let you know the state of the union with the hammers. And the first year we came back, I think we said we survived, and we've worked on it for four years. And this year, we have some really exciting news, but we find that the kids do our exciting news better than we do. So, we're going to have three of the kids talk real quick. We have like five minutes, I guess. We're going to have Paul speak first, because he's the first one to contact me. You should know, as he's talking, he's the fastest, what's it, varsity male in the state. Then we're going to have, I think, Jenna talk next, and then potentially Benton. Hopefully, we can get everybody in. And then if you guys have questions, we'll be here to answer your questions at the end. So, thank you.
Hello, I am Paul Gabrielson. I'll be giving you guys a quick recap of what we did this season. So, in our pre-race season, we just did our normal beginner-level practices where we taught people how to be safe on the trails and just how to have fun. We also made a new trail at Hess Field. It's actually a pretty decent length, and we made it specifically for the Dirty Grind Mountain Bike Festival, at which we did kind of a mini tune-up race, we called it. That just consisted of the team members. We also did time trials in which we could see how our fitness was improving throughout the season, along with our normal just rides where we would try to gain fitness or do intervals. During race season, we do more race-focused workouts and just rides. We do like practice starts because of starts of a mountain bike race. Picture a running cross-country race, but on bikes. So, it's like, kind of dangerous, and I've had a few crashes, or actually just one major crash in a start, and it's very important to be able to do those starts. So, that's why we practice those, and I feel like those were very helpful for all the kids in our race season. We actually, at every meet, we had people on the podium or winning races, which led to both our composite team and our school team becoming the state champions, which is pretty amazing considering that we only started four years ago. And I feel like all the people on this team are excellent, and I really want to thank the coaches and the school board for approving the team.
Thank you.
This is timed like everything else we do.
Hello, my name is Jenna Gabrielson, and I'm an eighth-grade student. This season, I learned that mountain biking isn't only about winning. It's about riding for the team and about inner-team relationships. I loved seeing my teammates achieve goals and hearing them cheer me on during my races. I have friends from all different teams scattered all over Pennsylvania. The girls in my category love to cheer each other on during races, even though we are competing against each other. Thank you to NICA and our amazing Hammers coaches for putting on an amazing season, and thank you to the school board for supporting our team.
Thank you.
This is Trent, who can be our last student speaker. I think, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My name's Benton Crellin, and I'm a ninth grader at the high school. This is my second year on the mountain bike team. I've been on many teams for soccer and baseball. The Hammer team has taught me more in two seasons about how to be a team than I had in all of my previous team experiences. We support each other and have become more like a family. Besides racing, I have learned to enjoy building and maintaining trails. This is a big part of what our team does. We work to better the trails in the community. This benefits not just the team, but others who may hike or bike on them. This year, our team contributed a total of 603 hours, split between 416 hours for the school district team and 187 for the composite team. The team's hours count towards something called Teen Trail Corps. Teen Trail Corps gives student athletes the opportunity to serve and give their time towards bike-related advocacy activities. The total points earned by our team for the season are made up of points earned by participating in and winning races and by team members completing trail hours. I have personally learned many skills when it comes to trail building and has become a hobby in and of itself. Being a part of this team has guided me towards my future career. I look forward to more years of riding with the Hammers.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liliana Torres. I go to St. Joseph's School. This is my first and a half year of doing, going with the Mountain Bike Hammers team. It's been a lot of fun just knowing this. Everybody's so, very supportive of each other, very, they help each other a lot. Like, whenever you go riding, you're always cheering for others, really just giving you a boost, really, riding. It's not really always about winning. It's always that you're making new friends.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Ingrid Macrae, and I'm an eighth grader this year. I'm going to give a quick wrap-up on our season. I'm sure, as all of you have heard, we had a very successful season competitively, but not only that, we think it's important to give back to the community through trail work hours, which our team had a lot of trail work hours this year, some kids reaching up to 15 hours just in this season alone. All of those go towards Teen Trail Corps, which is an organization run by Pickle and NICA where we can earn points for our team through trail work. So, not only are we working hard on our bikes, we're also working hard off of our bikes, on the trails, so that not only we can have fun on the trails, but other community members can have fun on the trails that we help repair, build, and signs that we help make and stuff. I think that's it. Thank you.
Fantastic.
I just wanted to say, so we started with the fastest boy in Pennsylvania, we ended with the fastest girl in Pennsylvania.
Wonderful.
So, I also wanted to say we have a highest percentage of female athletes of all the teams, I believe, in Pennsylvania, which is super awesome. We have a camp for women. Women are starting to realize they can do this. I can answer any kind of questions you guys have. I didn't want to go into, I have no idea what they're going to say, so I didn't want to reveal their content. So, thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
The only request I think we have is, we never really ask for anything from you guys, but we have a lot of trophies now. Is there a place that we could put some of our trophies somewhere in the school?
Right in Dr. Boyle's office.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Great stuff. Appreciate that. All right, moving along. Next order of business is our friends from KCBA. Turn the floor over to them.
How are you? I'll stand up here as I do.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Kelly from KCBA Architects. Along with me tonight is Ally Muth, who's also an architect with us. We've started with the district almost a year ago, beginning of this year, looking at a large master plan for the district. We looked at every one of your buildings. We talked about fields. I was here in the spring, gave a quite lengthy presentation tonight. I promised to be much, much quicker. We're talking tonight about essentially the first phase that the board had authorized back in the spring, which includes some HVAC infrastructure upgrades at Liberty Valley, and then a very small, minor move in this building that we'll talk about as well. So, we wanted to brief you on that and talk about the next couple of weeks about some things that'll be, that'll be happening. So, go ahead to the next slide. Our team of architects and engineers and civil engineers, again, have been working with the district and with Ken for the past several months. Go ahead. And the schedule looks as this. We're basically finishing up our bidding drawings, and it's important that we get out to bid on the project early in December. So, that'll go out on the street for contracts, contractors to bid on that project. We're doing this very early because a lot of what we're talking about at Liberty Valley is infrastructure, mechanical equipment, things like that, as I'm sure you've heard of a lot of material and, well, material and shortages and things like that. We want to get out very early. So, nothing's going to be installed there until, say, June, when students would leave, but we want to bid that very early to make sure we have competitive bidding. So, for you guys, the... So for you guys, the first board meeting of the year, in January 25th, we believe we'll have the bids back at least a week or so before that. We'll be able to review that with the district, with your business manager, with Ken, and come back to you on that very first meeting to approve the bid. So we're kind of giving you a little heads-up now that, you know, we're coming right out of the gate in '22 with that. And it's important, again, that night, to consider moving ahead with that project again, so that if we're entering into contracts with contractors, we're buying equipment early on and moving forward. So we wanted to let you know, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be going out to bid and then coming back in January to talk about the results of those bids and possibly moving ahead. So the next couple of slides, you can go through kind of quickly. If you show, click one more time there, and all these classrooms that turn colors, there's a lot of classrooms in this building, as you would think. It's a school. Every one of those rooms, as part of the base bid, is getting new lighting, new ceilings, new HVAC, new units, those little units that sit under the units, the windows, all of that is replaced. The entire building infrastructure is being upgraded as well. Rooftop units, boilers, all of those things that heat and cool and provide air and indoor air quality to the building is being replaced. We're doing a lot of ADA compliance upgrades, anything that's handicap accessible, things like sinks and toilet rooms and things like that. All of that is being upgraded in the building as well. So it's quite a, quite an extensive upgrade from left to right with a lot of other additional attributes. So go ahead. As I mentioned, in classrooms, HVAC, ceilings, lightings, and sinks, you see that little sink on the left there? That's kind of the existing one. It's not compliant, it's a little low, you don't have the area for a wheelchair to be able to go under. So in every classroom, we're essentially just taking that out, putting one in that meets code. So again, it's very simple and should be, should be work that can be accommodated over the summer. Go ahead. Corridors and support spaces, so basically all of the offices, all of the corridors, the little areas outside of the classrooms, all of that, the ceiling tiles replaced, the lighting's replaced with LED lighting. So every classroom, every hallway, has dimmable lighting, which is nice, and certainly much more energy-efficient lighting than the existing fluorescent. So go ahead. As I mentioned, the building systems, all the rooftop equipment, chillers, boilers, diffusers, pipe insulation, a bunch of boring things like that, automated controls, which is actually very important. Again, that's a big contributor to indoor air quality. All of those things are being replaced and upgraded. Go ahead. Exterior, if you hit one more time, there's a couple of areas where there's some existing LED lighting and some non-LED lighting. We're going to replace anything that's not LED with LED, so that we have standard coverage, more energy-efficient lighting, even on the exterior of the building. Go ahead. That's kind of the base bid pieces. And then there's a whole bunch of extras. Of course, when you start looking into buildings, everybody says, "Well, can you do this? Can you do this? Can you do this?" And of course, there's a budget. So we're looking at a baseline budget of everything that we showed above. And then we're going to bid a lot of additional things. These are all quality things, these are all important things that should be done or should be considered. But those are the things that we want to be able to itemize, so that we can bring to you on the 25th and say, "We can do the whole project for this. There's a little bit of money left over, hopefully. And here's a couple of suggestions of some things that we bid as alternates, that you can pick, say yes to this or no to that." And it gives us a little bit of wiggle room that we can prioritize when we meet in January. So there's, as you can see, there's a whole lot of pieces there. So if you go through these pretty quickly, next one, you know, data cabling, just kind of upgrading the speed and data cabling in classrooms. Go ahead to the next one. Carpet replacement, anywhere where there's carpet, that could be replaced. Again, that's pretty, pretty old. But again, that's not an infrastructure thing, but it's certainly something that would be nice if the number comes in well. Go ahead. As we mentioned, there's one classroom that does have carpet in it that would be replaced to a vinyl tile very similar to the floor here. Go ahead. Storage closets being added in some areas where, again, you've got a lot of storage kind of just being placed in the hallway. There was a plan to add some storage closets. Go ahead. The soffit canopy here, there's some issues with birds. So there's a, as if everybody laughs in the room, so obviously you know that. There's an alternate here to actually enclose the bottom of that. There'd be some lighting within that as well, which would certainly help, but also kind of prevent birds from flying in there. Go ahead. Covering some of the tile in the building. So there were some questions about the durability of the existing glazed tile that's in there. Some of that's starting to fall off. Some people aren't a big fan of the color. But teachers were also asking about tackable surfaces, so that they could pin up spaces, pin up things, pin up student work and things like that in the hallways. So the next couple of slides here, alternate six, and go ahead to the next two, are talking about covering some of those wall surfaces with a different material, and then putting tack boards on top of that. So go ahead to the next one. So again, you can see, these are all nice things, but those are kind of the extras. The meat of it is all of the HVAC pieces. So go ahead to nine. Upgrading some water fountains to water filling stations. Go ahead. Storage closets, we're looking at some alternative areas to expand some banned storage. Go ahead. Roof ladders, you know, things like that, that are, should be there, they're kind of required by OSHA if you have equipment on there. So again, something that would be nice. Go ahead. Now we look at the primary school. So this building here, again, if you recall, one of the parts of this study was talking about some grade reconfiguration and possibly expanding this building and looking at moving out of the middle school. Part of that plan was to move third grade into this building, move sixth grade into the primary school, I'm sorry, the intermediate school. In doing that, they said, "Well, we need to expand our cafeteria," and we wanted to switch out an area where a faculty room could get a little bigger. So there's, part of this bid will include very minor work that would be done in this building. So again, down in the cafeteria, there's two storage closets that would actually be opened up to the cafeteria, so that we can have some additional seating. And then one of the faculty rooms on the lower level and the admin would be enlarged as well. So part of the Liberty Valley project with some real minor stuff here, and again, something that we can pull out as a separate number. Go ahead to the last one. And again, some additional alternates for ventilation controls. It's kind of good, better, best pieces that allow for additional control. So go ahead. I think the next one's just going to kind of highlight what a unit ventilator is. You know, again, that kind of noisy thing that sits under the windows. So go ahead to the budget slide. So the budget for everything at Liberty Valley, the construction cost was three and a half, the total project was about 4.2. So that kept us on budget with where we wanted to be for just that Liberty Valley project. That's all of those HVAC things, that's all of those things ahead of that alternate list. If you go to the next list, these are all things that are alternates. So again, we were budgeting for the Danville Primary School piece as well, so there's money already budgeted for that. Hopefully, that number wouldn't be that high, there'll be some extra numbers for some additional alternates. So again, you can see, we're kind of tracking the main part of that project on budget. We're providing a whole bunch of things to consider as well, and all things that will work out with you on, in January. I think that's the last slide there. I think you're done. Right, that's part of the bid. So again, just ending with that schedule. So we'll be out to bid with all of that work in the coming weeks, and back to talk with you again at the end of January. Questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That would be during the public comment, second public comment period, sorry. Eventually, yes, at the end of the meeting. You got it.
Okay. Moving on to our next order of business tonight is our consent agenda items. We have a series of consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda items? 8.1, 8.2, 10.1, 12.1 through 12.3, and 13.1 through 13.8.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fish.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
That'll be roll call, please, or...
Mrs. Edmeetz.
No.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Boyle would like to have the floor for a moment.
Yes, thank you very much. Within that consent items, we have two longtime employees that are making their exits this year. We have, one is Diane Erdley. She's been a paraprofessional in this year, in this district for more than 20 years. She's dedicated herself to supporting children throughout the district. At one time, she was at Mahoning Cooper, now she's at the high school, and I think she's been everywhere in between. She has long-served and taken care of students behind the scenes, and she is going to be greatly missed because her services were valuable. Additionally, we have Mrs. Heater, who is currently a fourth-grade teacher. She has had 30 years of service in the district. She is very loved by our students and our families, and she's dedicated her career to this district. We wish her the very best in the next chapter of her life, and, you know, we are sad to see her go. When she tendered her resignation to me, I asked her, "Please, no," to "Please reconsider," but unfortunately, that has not happened. So we, it's our hope that she, the professional development opportunities, the experiences, the support provided to her by the district will serve her very well in the future. She has been a very valuable employee, and we just wish her the extreme best. For both of those, we have gifts that will be given to them the next time we see them. So I just wish them the best. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Dr. Boyle. Okay, our next order of business tonight is item 8.3, Assistant Swimming Coach. The board will take action to approve Casey Hackett as an Assistant Swimming Coach for diving for the 2021 through 2022 winter season. The stipend will be paid at the end of the season in accordance with the Coaching Matrix and the 2021 through 2022 budget. Do I have a motion to approve item 8.3?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsh. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. That'll be a roll call, please.
Mrs. Fish.
This is going to be the longest statement of yes or no that I've ever made. Tonight, we heard about students who are highly impacted by boarding events and being part of a team that are, has just had a huge impact on them as individuals and has contributed to their social, emotional learning. In my short time on this board, that has been a huge piece of what I have pushed for. The flip side of this is that I am highly concerned that we have an issue with coaches making inappropriate decisions. And they are public school employees, and they are representative of our district. So faced with those two contrasting issues, it's been a really hard decision. And I think it's important that the public understand that we are put in a position of knowing things that they do not, and we have to make decisions not just in the moment, but for what's best for this district as a whole. And I have gone back and forth on this, as to whether or not I'm comfortable with this decision. I am going to vote yes. It is with a caveat that there needs to be monitoring, and there needs to be coaches' ethics, and there needs to be an understanding that when you are a coach, you don't just represent your team and your students, you represent the district as a whole. So your words matter. My vote is a yes with that caveat.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
I would like to echo what Mrs. Fish said and also vote yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeetz. Mr. Huron.
I'd like to make a quick dovetail comment. I think what Mrs. Fish had just put out to the public is really critical for our community to understand. You know, sometimes it's perceived that we sit up here and we just vote. That's not the case. And there's a lot of times that there's a lot of information that we have to consider and ponder that's not public knowledge, nor would anybody really want it to be public knowledge if it affected you, your family, and your life. So I think that that's just part of our responsibilities, board members. It's not always easy. It's got a lot of ripple effects, and sometimes may never be fully appreciated by the public. So I'd just like to, just to add that in this moment, that these decisions are taken very seriously, all of them, every single one of them. And with that, I vote yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, next order of business is 8.4, our Bachi Ball Coaches. The board will take action to approve the Bachi Ball Coaches for the 2022 season. The stipend, if applicable, will be paid at the end of the season consistent with the 2021 through 2022 budget. Bachi Ball Head Coach, Sarah Klein; Bachi Ball Volunteer Coach, Bobby Ely; Bachi Ball Volunteer Coach, Alyssa Weinrich; Bachi Ball Volunteer Coach, Dana Ernst, excuse me. Do I have a motion to approve 8.4?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
That was a little close, I'm sorry.
That was like Pink Floyd moment. Okay, okay, roll call, please. Thank you both.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
This is my last meeting, so I'm going to be as verbose as I possibly can. I just have to say that I struggled with this one, only because Central Columbia is going to have a T-1. And so, we're going to be competing against each other. But that being said, I think this is a wonderful service that we're giving our kids, and I'm so looking forward to seeing these kids have fun with this. So, big old yes.
Fantastic.
Mr. Huron.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, next order of business tonight, item 8.5. Right, yeah. Revised stipend. The board will take action to approve the revised stipend in the amount of $4,500 for John Vella, Cross Country Coach, for the 2021 Fall Season, in accordance with the Coaching Matrix and the 2021 through 2022 budget. Do I have a motion to approve item 8.5?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fish. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsh. Roll call, please, or...
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item 8.6, the DAC invoice. The board will take action to approve the payment of the 2021 through 2022 invoice in the amount of $26,000 to the Danville Area Community Center for hosting the Danville Area School District Varsity Swimming and Diving Team for the 2021 through 2022 Winter Swim Season as presented. Do I have a motion to approve item 8.6?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reichert. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fish.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Get my feet under me. So next item is item 12.4. The board will take action to approve the employment of Michelle Benjamin as a paraprofessional at Danville High School at the contracted hourly starting rate of $11.45 effective November 30, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve item 12.4?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you and thank you.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item 12-5, the board will take action to approve the employment of Julia Edick as a paraprofessional at Danville Middle School at the contracted hourly rate of $11.45, pending the receipt of all clearances and documentation. Do I have a motion to approve item 12-5?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Christine.
Second.
Thank you. Christina.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 12.6, the board will take action to approve the employment of Jessica Ross as a Classroom Aid at Head Start at an hourly rate of $11.16, pending the receipt of all clearances and documentation. Do I have a motion to approve 12.6?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reichert.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jessica, what did I say?
Mrs. Edmeads.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes, motion carries. And just for the record, if I mispronounced her name, I apologize and any other names, I apologize for that. I think I said it wrong. Okay, item, next order of business.
13-7.
No, it's consent.
No, that was consent. We're done through consent. So transportation, nothing on transportation tonight, and we move to item 15, right? Okay, thank you, just seeing if everybody's paying attention. Okay, we are open for any board concerns, items, or any comments from the board at this time.
I would like to, hey, I told you, last board meeting.
Mrs. Fish, do you mind if I ask for your last comment that you'd stand in front of the group?
No, I'm not going to stand in front of the group. I just want to say thank you for the last two and a half years. It has been a true pleasure to work with this group of individuals. You are professional and you have children first and foremost in your thoughts when you make your decisions. And as soon to be just a plain old taxpayer, I really do appreciate that from my daughter who's still in the district. I want to task you with the, the understanding that you need to keep moving this forward and that social emotional learning is critical for our student population and we need to continue to have that in the forefront of what we do. We're not here for ourselves, we're here for our children. And I've been doing this for, I've been in public education for 30, almost 30 years and I have gained a whole new respect for public education because of my experience during this time on the school board. So I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve the public and to be part of an excellent team. It is not easy to be a school board member and for the most part, individuals who obtain these seats don't have an understanding of public education the way that those of us that work within public education do. So you hit this ground running, you get on the job training and all the way, while you don't get anything but the satisfaction of having served your student population. So I respect all of you for giving your time and energy to our community and I look forward to seeing Danville continue to grow and become a really great district, even better than what it is now. So thank you for that time and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else?
Ditto.
I just want to say one thing real quick, President. Sort of echoing on what Christina said, I just want everyone to know that this board does value academics. Obviously, I know athletics always gets a lot of attention, but every single board member sitting here tonight has students in the district and each and every one of them are on the distinguished honors list. I noticed that last week in the paper when it, or two weeks ago when it was posted in the paper. I just want to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add a comment. Being, being on the school board doesn't come with a lot of glory and it's, it can be a thankless job. We tend to hear quite a bit about folks that want to share some views of decisions and things they want to make and that's part of the process and that's a healthy environment, a very healthy environment. But I also just want to extend, with that said, a sincere thank you to Christina, to Christine, to Bonnie who couldn't make it tonight, but I know she's listening and certainly Castin. This has been quite a ride. You guys have been such an incredible bunch of folks. We haven't seen eye to eye and everything, but guess what? What'd we do, Christine said, put the kids first. It kept, it kept, it kept, that was our barometer, that was our yardstick, that was our measurement. Anytime we got, got into the, into the weeds or we had those discussions and those tough ones and making all those hard decisions that we've, we've got to do when we sit in a seat like this, at the end of all those, we always challenge each other, is this for the kids? What's in it for the kids? And that's what gets the golden thread that sewed us all together and for, for being able to spend the time we have together and, and put the energy into this thing, I sincerely thank you guys. So you're going to be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else tonight on the board? Okay. All right, we are on to our next public comment period. This is an open public comment session, same, same practice of name, address, and try to keep it at three minutes if possible. So I'll open up the floor and we have our first public comment, round two.
Hello, my name is Allison Cotner, 77 Bald Eagle Lane in Danville. I am here as a concerned parent and community member, along with other concerned parents, to bring a significant curriculum deficiency to your attention. There is no research and standards-based curriculum for literacy for grades three through five at Liberty Valley Intermediate School. I became aware of this issue two weeks ago during a parent-teacher conference. Following my meeting with the teacher, I asked the curriculum director for the fourth grade ELA curriculum at Liberty Valley. He was unable to provide one. In fact, he was unable to provide complete standards-based curricula for either ELA or LitCon. This is a problem for the district. First, because our teachers, who are outstanding, should have a curriculum to support their mission. And second, because it is required by the state and your own board policies. Per Title 22, Chapter 4 of the State Regulations, a standards-based curriculum is required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and must be provided to any parent or community member who requests it. Also, School Board Policy 106, Addressing Curriculum, states that guides shall be prepared for all planned instruction and adopted by the board. We are not meeting these requirements at Liberty Valley. I am bringing this matter to the board's attention tonight because the curriculum deficiency has not been addressed in a timely manner. The administration has been aware of this issue since last May at the least and they took no concrete action to resolve it. This should have been a priority. I met with Dr. Bickhart, Dr. Boyle, and Mr. Gump last week and reviewed a plan and timeline for how they intend to address the curriculum deficiency. It shows they are now thinking about a solution, but I question if that plan has the level of detail and strategy necessary to be effective. In addition to raising this matter to the board's attention, I have filed a formal curriculum deficiency allegation with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This message and the formal complaint are intended to serve as a call to action to the school board. I urge you to initiate a comprehensive audit of the district's curriculum. The audit should verify that Danville has a high-quality curricula in every subject area that is research-based, standards-based, transparent and available to the public, and is cohesive from K through 12. I recognize the board may not be curriculum experts and if that is the case, you should consult outside subject matter experts to accomplish this task. You cannot accept the administration's assessment that the curriculum is sufficient. You have a responsibility to be aware of the quality of our kids' education and to hold the leadership team accountable for any shortfalls. Our children have had tremendous teachers at Danville schools and we are so thankful for their dedication to the students. We must equip them with the foundation and resources to successfully educate our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask just a few questions? Are you aware that we have curriculum committee meetings?
I am and I've.
Great, that's, I think you would bring a voice to that. Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Sandy Green. I live at 650 Camp Road, Danville, PA. When I moved to Danville 10 years ago, I deliberately picked the Danville School District. I picked Danville because it had a strong reputation, insightful leadership, core of teachers and parents who cared deeply about their children's education, everything you could want for your child. Recently, one of the district's most requested and respected teachers unexpectedly announced her resignation, a teacher who devoted her life to nurturing the young minds in Danville. Naturally, I started to ask questions about why someone so clearly devoted to Danville and the district would suddenly and unexpectedly resign from a position she clearly loved when her students and their parents so clearly valued her and what she contributed to their education. As I began to investigate the situation by talking to fellow concerned parents, I found, much to my horror, the school had openly admitted they had no ELA or LitCon curriculum in the fourth grade and little curricula existed in the third and fifth grade and in what exists is not research-based according to standard academic definitions. This is a violation of federal law as defined by Title 8 of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and is amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. This may make the district vulnerable to federal lawsuits. It has also become apparent that the district currently does not have adequate science or social, social, social study programs in grades three through five but are piloting these, which is inadequate response in light of other vast curricular deficiencies. It is clear that these are not new problems and have been going on unaddressed for a significant amount of time. This problem is compounded by the fact that the board is in direct violation of its own Policies Number 106, Guides for Planned Instruction, by not having an approved curricula for these topics for over six months. This has led me to question not only why the current leadership has not done the bare minimum to directly address this problem, but what other hidden problems may exist in the district curricula that have not come to apparent attention because of the valiant effort by our school teachers to fill in the gaps. I would like to ask the board to hold the district accountable. It is my belief that the K through 12 curriculum needs a full audit to reveal any further holes that have been hidden up until this time and parents deserve to be presented with a curricular plan that is cohesive, research-based, clearly mapped, and transparently communicated to stakeholders that exist in this community. They should also present us with a timeline with coherent, verifiable endpoints as rapidly as possible with a plan to set adequate resources to make it a reality. This audit should start currently with grades three through five to address the immediate problems that exist that we have delineated and if malfeasance or neglect is found, action should be taken by the board immediately. Nothing less is acceptable for the disservice that is currently being done to countless children in those grades. The district leadership also needs to think deeply about the continuity of the K through 12 curriculum so money is not wasted purchasing, purchasing stopgap curricula that don't effectively and coherently teach our children. If current leadership is unable to do so effectively, they should be replaced by the school board whose first priority should be the effective and seamless education of our children in this community. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, my name's Amber. I am here to address the same thing. I'm not going to repeat everything that they just said. They did a fantastic job. I will say that I am so saddened that Mrs. Heater is leaving. That was, I don't, she was not fought for. She is one of the best teachers that this school district has had. I've been in this school district with children for 21 years and she is amazing. That you sit here and you say, I'm so sad she's leaving and I asked her not to leave. Might have happened, but there's a bigger picture. A teacher that's that devoted to our school district and our children doesn't just say, I'm sick of this. I don't want to do it anymore. I'm bored. There was reasons. She was fighting for our children to get what they should have had already and then treated poorly. I've asked to meet with you, pushed me off on Mr. Gump, who's not going to answer my questions because it's not necessarily his, his place to answer the questions I have. I've told you my concerns about my daughter and about all of these children. What is going to happen come December 17th? I know on Monday there was four teachers out at Liberty Valley and you did not have one sub for any of those teachers. That's not your fault. Everybody has a shortage. But now my child is here and what is going to happen for the rest of the year? Is she going to get the education that she deserves because of what has come of this? And I feel like I'm not getting the answers that I'm asking for.
I did see your email today, so it will be addressed when we come back from break. But as you can look on the website, we've already advertised for a long-term sub for that position and we have one applicant as of today.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? Okay.
Mark Thomas, 309 Avenue D, Danville. I just wonder if there's going to be any comment or response to these folks that have just gotten, spoken about the curriculum issue at, at the intermediate school or wherever it is.
I can have Dr. Bickhart address it because we have been working on it, so I'll allow him. If there's no other public comment.
Perfect, thank you.
And after everyone is done with public comment, we'll have Dr. Bickhart speak.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Public comment? Last standing public comment.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I appreciate the time to, to address. So 2020, the pandemic began. I was still principal of the primary school. I was offered the position of curriculum director that next summer. We began to look at curriculum. What I can say about the established curriculum prior to my taking over was there were what were considered course overviews that were the curriculum guides presented to the state level. They were utilized at all levels. They were created at all levels. They had basic frameworks. In my time, when we first started last year, we were looking at the implications with COVID. We were looking at putting different modes of instruction regarding cyber, regarding hybrid learning. So that was our direct focus last summer, our last school year. The curriculum committee, we've had great discussions on what I saw as deficiencies in the curriculum. We are beginning to address them. I have been the lead charge at Liberty Valley saying I believe science and social studies need to be addressed. That is a critical component leading into the middle school. We've had meetings with our leads there. We've had discussions with them. We've had, you know, inside discussions when it comes to the teachers and what they have and the materials they have. What I can address is that while I would agree that we need to make concrete, robust, systematic curriculum maps, K to 12 in all areas, and I've shared board-wise and with some of the parents, the framework we're going to use to do that, and I assure you that if you talk to every lead in our district, they would share with you that framework that we are moving towards over the next two to three years that is consistent. So everything is mapped out. Similarly, a parent gets on in kindergarten, they look at the kindergarten math map all the way through Calc BC and that we assure that those maps are the same, completely aligned, linked to thorough lesson plans. What I do know is that we do have lesson plans that are standards-based for 180 days of instruction in all subject areas. We've had lesson plan areas for years, so, you know, the combination of those maps and the lesson plans will continue to improve. At Liberty Valley, currently, we are having a discussion about ELA series as launching points that are research-based because of the concerns of what is currently being used. They're doing novel studies. All units were created off of standards. The way to describe it would be more of a homegrown curriculum. It's been, it was the move in most elementary schools for the past seven to 10 years of looking at the standards, crosswalking them with the Common Core standards nationally, putting together a curriculum based off of read alouds and then the core aspects of literacy. I think the example of substitutes is one that shows it's very difficult for districts to be, continue to do that because we can't find the additional time to sit down and have our teachers come together like we used to. So that's where we're looking at, you know, the basis of research-based series to, to guide us and to be that launching point as we move forwards. So I think, you know, when we look at this, there is a plan in place. It's going to take time. I wish it would move faster. I also have to have the respect of the teachers who are the one. the respect of the teachers who are the ones doing this, and changing everything drastically, especially inside of a pandemic was a concern. But I'm very confident that I think the majority of our teachers would say they feel part of the discussions we are having, they feel part of the plan that goes up through meetings we had at the high school today regarding where we're going with curriculum there. So it is evolving, it is, you know, we're looking at, towards the future and making the necessary changes as we move forward, and we hope to make them as fast as possible. You know, I look back at our data, I feel like there is concrete things that are going well, and I do agree, I would say a huge part of that is we have high-quality teachers in this district. But our process for curriculum for years has been involving them and utilizing them as part of the resource. So we'll continue to do that, we'll continue to look at materials and resources that best support them as teachers and the district.
The other piece is that in our budget, we do have dedicated finances to provide opportunities for teachers to do summer work on curriculum, and we did have fourth-grade teachers working this summer, those that agreed to do so, specifically working on this. Moving from a LitCon, which incorporates social studies and science into the curriculum from that perspective, using literature, both nonfiction and fiction, is the process that had been in place prior to Mr. or Dr. Bickhart taking the position. And since then, the discussion and what we've looked at with the data is the decision that we would like to dedicate some real time for science and social studies. Those areas aren't as strong as our other areas, and we believe that by incorporating that at Liberty Valley, we will strengthen the curriculum as well as working on the ELA curriculum to provide that format that it's easily accessible. Again, there is a stack of about three reams of paper that are the 190 days of lesson planning that is provided for the teachers in fourth grade. They are familiar with it. Additionally, last year, we had a teacher, brand-new to the district, come into fifth grade, and using those resources and the support of her team, was very able to step into ELA and move forward. So we know that things are being taught appropriately, we know that standards are being addressed, and we know that it's not a pretty package, but it's working well because we do have dedicated teachers. The public comment had closed. Excuse me. I asked respectfully, public comment had closed. I explained that previously. And you can call, and we can make arrangements to meet at the office.
Thank you, Dr. Bickhart. Okay, moving on. Time for adjournment. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Meeting's adjourned.